You don't see a flag, do you? See a flag? You've got enough in your...
To our right.
Behind the curtain.
Ah, okay, thank you. All right, we're ready to go. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10:4-6 that sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Please call the roll, Nora.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Moserella.
Here.
Mr. Barick.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Present.
Ms. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Willens.
Here.
Chairman Ira Kane.
Present.
Our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Here.
Our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and the board attorney, Mr. Kane.
Start off the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none and see none. Do we have resolutions?
No.
No resolutions, okay? And I guess the first case is Application 2171, Pudding Stone Developers, Seconseverance Variants for Steep Slope Disturbance and Walls.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph O'Neill here on behalf of the applicant. We'd like to get right to our planning testimony, which is going to be dramatically presented by John McDonough coming down the aisle as we speak. If I could just have a moment, yeah.
Drum roll.
I do want to point out to the board and confirm a conversation Mr. King and I just had, that our intern here, Patrick McClellan, is here and available for questions should the board or anyone else ask. But I'd like to get to Mr. McDonough.
Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you can see, my name is Chris Bayliss, 38 Long Ridge Road. As you can see, the rest of the people there over here, we're part of the opposition and we'd like to understand what the agenda is for tonight.
Don't infer to yourselves as agendas, you're in opposition. You're concerned citizens, okay?
Okay, we're concerned citizens.
Thank you very much. The agenda, we were going to hear from the testimony from the planner.
Okay. Is there any, is there, at what point of the evening will be, will we be able to address issues that we're concerned about?
Soon as the applicant finishes his application, presentation.
Okay.
And then we, then we go into opportunity for members of the public to make statements.
I understand that from last time. We're just a little bit concerned for a couple of reasons. One, one is, we know that we had asked, we have some neighbors that had asked through their attorney, who is, as I come to understand it, formally opposed, had asked for an adjournment a couple of times with lots of notice and it was not accommodated. We want to know if tonight could possibly be the end-all, be-all of leading to a decision or if there actually will be a second meeting to follow this.
Well, I can tell you, I can almost guarantee the applicant will finish his case. He's only asked one witness.
Okay.
You know who's going to determine whether we can finish this tonight?
Us.
You guys. I'm serious.
Yeah.
The questions, however many questions you have, and then statements. I can almost guarantee you, we're not going to finish tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
This...
Because usually, in a case like this, members of the public take up more time than the applicant. Okay?
Fair enough.
So, we just roll with it.
Okay, cool. So, the second is, although we've been very diligent about filing Oprah requests to try to stay on top of the latest developments in this application, we understand that very recently, a filing was made and we actually missed, we, by chance, time our Oprahs and there was a filing made on September 15th. And we know that we're operating in less than ideal conditions in understanding the application as it's going to be presented tonight. So, we're a bit of a disadvantage. We're quite ignorant as to what the changes are. We haven't been able to study them to be able to be informed as a public, to be able to comment. Does this sound, does this sound reasonable? To be able to proceed?
Can you respond to what I didn't hear you said?
So, I think what you're saying is the, the plot or the, the new drawing that was discussed at the last meeting, which wasn't presented to the board or to anyone, you just heard that it was submitted 10 days prior, on the 10th day, which meets the requirement. If it was sent in on the 9th day, then we wouldn't have this meeting, but the applicant met its burden of providing this within 10 days. It's, it's at the town hall. Nora has it, you can get a copy there. And it hasn't been marked into evidence yet. It may, I don't know if the applicant is going to mark this or discuss it, but it is a five-page document and it has a drawing of what's proposed, the proposed location of the two homes and some walls and whatnot.
Sure, we can imagine from the last time. I think my, my point is, we've been very diligent, as Nora will tell you, about filing for Oprahs. We've probably submitted more than 20. And the timing of our last request was just prior to the filing of this. And so, none of the, none of the people in the public have had an opportunity to review this, so we'll, we won't be asking the best questions.
You were saying you put in a request and you never got it?
No, I'm saying we, when we last officially filed, the, we, I'm sure we were given everything that was on hand at the time. But not knowing that this was coming, this would have been filed on apparently September 15th, and we didn't know it was there. We figured by the time we filed, which would have been the first few days of September...
So, what happened is, they filed an Oprah request. It was responded to, but after it was responded to, then this, this document came in.
Nora, were these, when were these, when were these documents in your office?
Yes, an Oprah request was filed, I believe it was yesterday, and I sent up the requested documents yesterday to the clerk's office. So, within the same day that Oprah request was made, I responded.
When did you have the documents in your office? These documents?
10 days, 10 days prior.
You had an opportunity to come to the office and look at the documents.
Mr. Chairman.
That's not our burden, that's your burden.
Yeah, I understand and I actually...
It's not like we shut you out. We were there.
So, there's not a proactive message that comes to the public that says, ooh, this is filed? We would have filed something earlier in September.
No, you guys have to be diligent in following up.
So...
Because I can announce at a meeting that the stuff is going to be there, but then we may not meet for three weeks.
Okay, I understand that, but Mr. Chairman, where are the public?
When the meetings, meetings are published, we're having a meeting, or the word is put out from the prior meeting, when and where we're going to have it. So, the burden's off our shoulders.
But how is the public to prepare if they're not, we, we've been so diligent about filing Oprahs, I'm telling you, probably 20 over the last several months. The timing is amiss. I mean, how do you get great discovery, fair discovery, if you don't...
If you have a problem with the Oprahs, contact administration, because we don't have anything to do with that.
Well, we don't have a problem with Oprahs...
We're just a bunch of volunteers sitting up here with our professionals. We don't get involved in administration.
We don't have a problem with Oprah, Mr. Chairman.
Talk to the clerk, talk to the mayor.
We have a problem with the process. It's archaic. What, how are we not treated as if, to get the best information, so we have an effective meeting together?
You have the information available to you, all you have to do is call Nora.
But we don't, no one is going to be filed. No one's out looking out for us, telling us it's going to be filed.
When was the Oprah filed?
Can we get on with the meeting and get to the important stuff? We're not changing our mind up here. We're going ahead with this meeting tonight.
Fine.
Because as far as I know, the applicant has met the due diligence by getting the documentation to the, the board secretary within prescribed time. That's all we can go by.
And Mr. Chadwick is okay with the inadequacies of what was filed, because the one minute that I had to look at it...
Excuse me, I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt you here. I, I agree with Mr. Chairman, but however, I was taking notes on your earlier testimony. I'm going to ask you once again, when did you say you filed your Oprah re, I, I was taking notes as you were speaking?
Jess, can you tell me?
When was the Oprah filed? I, I can't hear her. She's, she's going to have to go on the mic.
September 7th, she says. We acknowledge the fulfillment.
This is stamped right. When she filed, I...
The documents were available in the office for your review. We did not shut you out. If you're concerned about this application, you have to be proactive. And again, we have no control over Oprah requests, or what the administration does, or what the clerk, what the municipal clerk does.
Right, and I just want to mention, and I think we talked about it yesterday, maybe we didn't, when you filed earlier in the month for something I didn't have, it doesn't stay open. You have to file for what you want. And I have told Ms. Buffam and another couple of people, call now and then and see the plans come in, have come in, and nobody did. So, it's up to you to, you know, take that step, to find out what the plans are here. It's not up to us to call you up and say, hey, they're here.
You guys have said that you're laypeople. We're more than laypeople. You guys are here twice a month or whatever it is. We're here once in our lifetime. We, we don't do this for a living. I'm just asking for some modern-day alerting, you know? You have Google alerts, you get things in your Facebook or whatever. I mean, how is this, how should this be any different? You know you have a group of people who are, who are concerned.
Yes, and I informed this group of people, at least some of them within your community, to call and follow up, to see the plans have come in, yet nobody did.
Every day, Nora, every day? Every day, Nora, you want us to...
Not to call every day. I tell you, call, you know, every few weeks. At first, I said, you'll give it, you'll, three weeks maybe, but I, I did say, keep calling.
Hundreds of more people.
See if they're here. You don't need everybody to call, but nobody called.
I'm just going to say, it makes it very hard for the public to, to help you guys make a good decision, because we can't keep up.
We're, we're not going anywhere. We're going to, I have this meeting tonight. So, why don't you have a seat? Let us proceed. If you have questions to the witness, you can ask them. We cannot control Oprah, control an Oprah, all right? Now, let me just say something. The first meeting we had on this, this application, 150 people, 170 people showed up.
Uh-huh.
So, we, we carried the meeting, because we were in violation of the fire code there.
Yes.
And we made arrangements to have the second meeting at the hills and the third meeting here.
Yep.
And you know what? I'd have empty seats in the town hall right now if I was in town hall.
Well, we are...
What's, what's, what gives? 150 people came out the first time. I think you have less than you had at the second meeting.
We do, because we're under the impression that there's also going to be a follow-up meeting in October. And that would be the, the most significant meeting that would be held.
That's not true.
Every meeting significant.
That's not true at all. We're, we're hearing, we're hearing all this testimony for maybe 10, 12 hours, and you think the, the last meeting is going to be the most important?
We, we were told that there would be one more meeting after this. And so, we are trying not to fatigue our supporters. Anyway, as submitted, Mr. Chadwick, are you accepting of the, the changes that, you had written a letter, which we did get a copy of, and said it's...
Mr. Chadwick's not going to answer any questions of yours.
Okay.
We have to move on, okay?
The letter seems like it's incomplete.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can't read the name, do you?
Okay.
All right, what's that?
You asking me? My name is Robert Ira Kane, 52-year resident of Parsippany. I have been involved in this board, this is my 34th year and 24th year as chairman. And if I wasn't doing a good job, do you think I'd still be sitting up here? Okay? And I, I, look, you guys are all here because of Pudding Stone. One little, one little part of the town. This group, this group looks at every quadrant of the town, looks at residential, commercial, use variances. We, we pass judgment on many, many ones. And the ones that are crap, we tell them to get lost, okay? But every applicant has the right to be heard. Whether we like it or not, they have the right to be heard. All right, we're moving on, let's go.
So, I was in the process of introducing Mr. McDonough, our planner.
So, raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony you're about to give before the board, trust yourself, you got it.
I do.
And for the record, your name is?
Hi, everyone, my name is John McDonough, that's spelled M.C. capital D.O.N.O.U.G.H.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, I am the project planner.
And you've been sworn before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Right, Mr. Chairman, the witness has been sworn and he has been deemed an expert.
So, Mr. McDonough, you're familiar with the application that's before the board here this evening?
Yes, I am. I was here for the full duration of Mr. McClellan's testimony last time.
You're familiar with the local ordinances and master plan?
Yes, I am.
I wonder if you can compare that application to those documents and give us your findings.
Sure. Every planning application is charged with reviewing existing conditions, proposed conditions, the zoning criteria, the relief that the applicant is seeking, and then we have well-established criteria that guides this board and that guides all boards in terms of whether that relief should be granted. The task before this board this evening is relatively simple. It's a balancing test. Much like any decision in life, we look at the positives, we look at the negatives, and we balance them out. Importantly here, the relief that the board is being asked to move on is relatively limited. My testimony in that regard is going to be relatively limited as well. It sounds like the public has things they want to say, so maybe that's, that's good news for our, our interested parties here. The key point is this, we are dealing with the tail end of an approved and developing residential subdivision up on the top of Beverly Court, Beverly Street. And I have been involved with that application over the course of several years, as lot development plans have come in. We're not here creating any development lots. These lots are fully plotted, lawfully approved, and approved for building lots. The homes that the applicant is proposing here are coming here regardless of how the board votes tonight. As a planner, we always look if there's an opportunity for improved zoning or an opportunity for site betterment in the long term. And I'm going to give the board some reasons why I think there is an opportunity for site betterment here in the long term. No doubt about it, anytime there's change, anytime there's new development, any construction has impacts associated with it. And what I'm going to offer here is that the impacts associated with this additional grading is more in the short term, but over the long term, environmentally, functionally, and visually, this is going to be a better zoning alternative for this site. And that's the balancing that the board is tasked with. So, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to start off, as I always do, with some exhibits, just to give the board some context as to where we sit within the community and the physical characteristic of the area that we're talking about. And these are going to be, I stapled them together, file size 11 by 17, for the benefit of the public, that it's just photos of the site.
Joe, is this A...
A6, I think.
A6.
And so, it looks like everybody has A6, but we'll start with the first page, which shows the site is part of Pudding Stone Ridge, which is certainly a beautiful landform that defines this portion of Parsippany. It's near the town border with Denville. It's also down near the border with Morris Township. I drive Hanover Avenue, West Hanover Avenue, every single day. I've done it for 30 years, so I get a glimpse of this ridge as I drive past the site to work every single day. The key point about this area, again, it is a absolutely beautiful landform. You get a sense of the vast extent of what defines Pudding Stone Ridge. It spans several hundred acres. We're talking about a couple of acres here. So, to the extent that there's a concern that this development is going to cause, I'll say, a gaping hole in that landform, having driven that every day, and the greater context of what this landform constitutes, this is going to be anything but a gaping hole in the ridge and certainly not going to alter the integrity or the beauty of that ridge. The area is diversified in terms of its build-out. I'm going to come back to this, but this development is not proposed on the apex of the ridge or the ridge itself, it is on the side slope. The ridge itself has already been developed, and you can see there's a road running along the top known as Long Ridge Road, which has homesteads that were cleared to allow for land development, that has nicely reforested over time. And time is a factor in this application as well, because our applicant is proposing a complete reforestation plan, comprehensive reforestation plan here as well, to reestablish that forest post-construction, which is something that would not be realized under the approved development plans for this site. And that's, that's very important. We have a site that is approved for two homes. The homes that are proposed here fully conform as to height, as to coverage, and as to setbacks on all sides. So, these homes are coming regardless of whether the board moves favorably or not on this application tonight. It's really a question of the positioning of the homes and the landform or the grading that goes around it. We think these are better lots, better usable lots, based on what the applicant is proposing. But we'll go through that as we go through the project positives. We've got just immediately south of the subject site, the county compost facility and the county complex. We've got public lands, which are natural open space woodlands, which are not being touched as part of this application. And again, that spans hundreds of acres. We've got public lands or woodlands immediately to the east of the subject site before we hit the Greystone Health Facility. And then again, you work your way down to the county complex on the south side, on the Morris Township side of, of the development. Further to the east, we get to the Central Park of Morris County as well, which is a beautiful, developed park as well. Flipping over to the second page, we show what the site looked like about a month ago. This is July 19th. Admittedly, it was a hazy day. I think these were taken when we were having the issues with the, the smoke from, from Canada. But you can see, again, the tree canopy defines the landform. The development, the subject development off of Beverly Court is, I'm sorry, Beverly Street is up to the top of the page. And I'm sorry I didn't point out for the board on the first page, we've outlined the subject site in yellow. It is two building lots and then a third lot, which is actually proposed to be deeded over to the town if this project is approved. That's over 13 or so acres of land that will remain in its natural state as part of this application. So, the point is, I went with a light tan color to match the tan color of what's already been developed along Beverly Street and Violet Street, and showing how this proposal is going to be relatively modest in the context of the overall open space that's out there now. Bring us back to the second slide, again, looking to the north, looking from the downhill to the uphill. The second page shows the vast woodland that is to remain, and as I just said, 13.4 acres of woodland on the subject site, including the adjacent Lot 45.09, are to be preserved out of the 16.8 acres that make up the three lots, again, including 45.09, which is proposed to be deeded over to the town. And takes a lot of unknown out of the equation in terms of what could happen there going forward. We never know with affordable housing regulations where things may stand. This takes that unknown completely out of the, out of the equation. And then finally, the third view is to look at the reverse view from the high side of the development, looking downhill. We've identified where the site is, and as a landmark, we give you the county compost facility. And the point is, the ridge is off to the right. That's where those homes on Long Ridge Road are developed. They nicely nestle into the landform, and that's the ultimate disposition of what the applicant is looking to achieve here as well. The development on the ridge has nicely reestablished the forest, which is, again, the same exact intent here. That is something that would not be realized under the approved development plans, which have no reforestation obligation whatsoever. With that background, in terms of the relief, again, the board is tasked with a very relatively simple balancing here, weighing the positives and negatives of, I'll say, this expanded grading plan. And as I said, and as we all know, the site is in the R1 zone. No relief is needed for the dwellings themselves. These are approved building lots, we're not creating these lots. No relief needed for height coverage or setbacks. And again, as I said, development of these lots are inevitable. So, the real question before the board is whether this modified grading plan and the additional disturbance that goes with it, Mr. McClellan spent a lot of time on the details and the numbers last time. The question I see for the board is whether this creates an opportunity for improved zoning in the long term, and that's really what the balancing test is. And so, I would offer for the board the following long-term benefits to consider as part of this application. Number one, from a landscape standpoint, from a planning standpoint, a graded landscape is generally more consistent with the landform that's out there now. The ridge is not a walled or tiered landscape, but it is a naturally molded landscape, and that's exactly what the applicant is proposing here. With reforestation and establishment of vegetation over time, a graded landscape will fit and integrate better with the ridge than a walled landscape. And of course, it's inevitable over time, walls will need maintenance that doesn't go with the natural landscape. Benefit number two, as I said, the alternate plan does include a comprehensive reforestation plan, which the approved plan does not. There are hundreds of trees that we've proposed. In landscape and planning, we call it an ecotone. It's an ecological phrase, where we create a succession or a transition from the heavy deep woodland to the lesser lands or the landscape of, of housing and fields and the like. Ecotones are natural in nature. This is an opportunity to replenish the forest with that edge, as opposed to a sharp break going from woods to homes, and we think that's good from a planning standpoint as well. This creates an opportunity for more diversified habitat and foraging for wildlife. When we create these edge plantings, we see more berries, we see more things that would be conducive to birds and wildlife that we may not see in the, in the deeper forest. So, the ecotone is another consideration in terms of the overall project benefit. As I said, the alternate plan includes a stipulation to deed 4509 to the town, which is over 11 acres, and ensures that land will never be built upon there as pressures mount for more affordable housing. We suffer from a scarcity of land and scarcity of housing here in the town, in the county, in the state as a whole. This is an opportunity to take this land out of question. The grading plan, as you heard through the testimony last time, will create more functional yard space for the residents who will ultimately live there, better living environment. And in full disclosure, I testified for other homes in this neighborhood along the way, along Beverly Street, where I actually endorsed retaining walls. This is clearly a different location. We're now at the end of the street, where we have more spatial capacity to accommodate grading. And if you can accommodate grading and you can mitigate that with landscaping, that's a good thing from a planning standpoint. The walls that are between those homes as we step down the hill are on less available space. Here, we have more space available to work with. So, again, I think there's a clear distinction between this location and other locations along the subdivision. Taking all of those benefits, we bring them all back to the purposes of the land use law. There are about 18 or so fundamental purposes. It's an applicant's burden to tie to at least one, and I think the clear purpose here that is met, purpose J, to avoid degradation of the environment through improper use of land. Again, we think that there's a good balancing here, where in the long term, the environmental, the environment will benefit. Counterbalancing that with the negative impacts, they are certainly going to be impacts here, trees coming down, earth being moved. They are more short-term in nature and mitigated by, I think, those long-term benefits that I just gave the board. Falling back on the exhibits, this is a very small part of Pudding Stone Ridge. It is not going to alter the integrity of those hundreds of acres that define that beautiful ridge. And as I said, the peak is all... and as I said, the peak is already developed. So there is proof positive that this land can be developed without creating a substantially detrimental environmental impact. There are about six or so homes that are but this subdivision, that will be, I'll say, impacted by what the applicant is proposing here. Five of those homes, or all but one, are going to have preserved woodland immediately adjacent to them. There's just one home, I believe it's Lot 32, and that will be supplemented with additional landscaping. So, again, we've got good preservation along the homes that are already there, and then we've got enhanced or supplemental landscaping on the one home, where we will see grading going closer to that property line. Given all of that, again, I think that based on the testimony of Mr. McClellan, this site will be stabilized, that's one of the reasons why we have these steep slope controls, in accordance with all erosion control regulatory requirements, to the extent that relief can be granted without substantially adverse impacts here environmentally, visually, or functionally on that overall landform, and again, I give that to the board to consider with the visual evidence and the testimony that I've just presented. On balancing, I think this fits nicely within the C2 test, and approval could be warranted here.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough. I'd like to go back, if we could, talk about the planting scheme that you came up with as part of this application. You mentioned the hundreds of trees that are going to be replaced here. I wonder if you could just give us the highlights?
Sure, we created a diversified mix of plantings, and we submitted a plan to the board dated...
Back in June.
September 7th.
Yes, that plan was dated 9/7/22. And basically what it shows is a shaded reforestation area on Lot 45.11 of approximately 2.19 acres, and a reforested area on Lot 45.10 of approximately 1.85 acres. Again, to essentially plant the disturbed areas with a mix of deciduous canopy trees, ornamental understory trees, we've got evergreen trees mixed in, and shrubs as well. The total reforestation schedule on Lot 45.10 equates to over 300 plantings, and on 45.11 equates to over 200 plantings. Again, a nice diversified mix of plants, there are probably eighteen different types of plant species that we've proposed.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough. I have no further questions for this witness.
Questions for Mr. McClellan?
Yeah. So I'm looking at page three here, on the one you handed out, A6. Just a question, I see the spots cleared, now, we're going to go further back, more clearing there, is that to grade it?
Yes, again, Mr. McClellan's testimony was essentially asking the board to approve another acre of clearance on each lot.
Okay, so the house would be right where the, you see the dirt now, and you want to go back another acre, that's what I'm...
That's correct. And bear in mind, we've got what I call the pinwheel effect with these lots, they're pie-shaped around the cul-de-sac, so as the lot lines open up, moving those houses back create more space between the homes, as opposed to closer to the street.
Can you summarize the different plantations, or plantings that you alluded to just before concluding your testimony?
Did you want me to give the plant types? I'm sorry?
Just overall, what are you planting?
Yes, we tried to go with native plants. So the plantings that we put in there are red maple, sweet gum, black gum, I'm going too fast, just let me go, you know, white oak, pin oak, red oaks, they're all native. Understory trees, we've got shadlo service berry, flowering dogwood, common witch hazel, and sweet bay magnolia. We've got deciduous evergreen trees, including our American holly, we've got red cedar, we've got white pine and red pine, and then a mix of shrubs as well.
What's the rough estimation for that to come, fully mature to at least kind of cover what you're doing over there?
Well, these plants are proposed in the eight-foot height range, they'll grow about a foot per year, so, again, ten years, we'll get nice full canopy, and in twenty years, we'll have nice mature established vegetation.
Thank you.
Who's responsible, so I'm sure there's some kind of percentage that you know will not survive, the first winter, the first year, the first drought, who's responsible for replacing all those when all those plants die?
That might be a legal question, I think it's certainly something that can be discussed as part of the conditions of an approval if the board were to move on that.
Right now, the votes laid out, these are on private property, so the private property owners would be responsible unless there was some other arrangement under it.
Mr. McDonough, I took a ride up to the site today and walked through the mud, and clarify something for me, I think I know the answer, but a few years ago, four or five years ago, five or six years ago, we had an application for, I think, a couple of these houses to put a wall up.
Yes, as we work our way up the hill, there are, we have side yard setbacks between the homes, and there just was not enough slope to grade between those homes, so we went with walls stepping down the hillside.
And the walls aren't very, very wide, are they, from the house to the wall?
No, no, there's a clear stepping happening.
And I believe yourself and the applicant made quite a presentation as to why we should put the walls up.
Correct.
Now, we're in the same development, right, same side of the street, right?
Yes.
Why are we now saying no walls?
Because we're now down at the downhill side of the road, we don't have another, we don't have two homes where we need a wall in between, this is an opportunity to grade down and create a more natural landform than a retaining one.
But removing many, many trees is not a natural way of doing things.
The mitigating factor is the reforestation, it's, that's the balancing.
And we also have a significant amount of dirt that's going to be moved one way or the other, right?
That's true, again, yes.
Cubic yards.
That's, that is true.
Would that have to happen if we built a wall up on top? Would we need to move all that dirt? Maybe this is a question...
That might be an engineering question, because again, we'd be creating a stepped landform as opposed to a molded landform, I don't know the specifics about the actual volumes.
So I'll just take that a step further, something you testified to in 2015 was that the walls, the use of the blocked walls will minimize the additional amount of disturbance to the backyard, preserving additional tree stands in the back, limiting the amount of fill to be required brought to the site. So what I'm hearing is a complete flip-flop, and that's what I don't understand, because you, I wasn't here in 2015, chairman's opinion is that it was a wonderful presentation, I'm reading this, it seems great, and you did a really strong job of saying, we need the walls, and here are all the positive criteria for the walls, but now you're saying, you know, we don't want a wall, we want the slope, where in 2015, you said the wall gives a backyard space, but now it doesn't?
Two totally different landscapes and plotting of lots that we're dealing with. Again, these are the lots at the end of the cul-de-sac, which are exceptionally deep lots, those other lots were much narrower, much shallower, and required walls to make those lots buildable, to make those lots work.
So is the slope, I assume it's a pretty long slope, is that an ideal usable backyard?
Is the proposed backyard more usable? Yes, I would offer that they are, than a stepped backyard for sure.
Than a walled backyard?
Yes. And here, we just have land that we didn't have on those other lots, those other lots are much, much smaller.
You said tonight that one of the positive criteria was the scarcity of housing, and that this would take that land out of the question. You also said that this, these two houses are going to be built no matter what, so how is that part of the positive criteria when it already exists?
There's an unknown associated with Lot 45.09, that's not one of the two building lots, the two building lots are 4510 and 4511. 4509 now has a sanitary pump station on it to get the infrastructure back up the hill, but that constitutes over thirteen acres of land that, as time goes on, we don't know the disposition of that land. The applicant is ready, willing, and able, as part of this application, to take that land off the table for development consideration down the road at all. Right now, there's nothing to prevent that land, as far as I can see it, from being developed.
You're talking about the open space here?
Yes.
The open space lot, the Lot 45.09, yes.
You'd have to give significant relief to meet the township standards and not develop...
That is true, yes, we'd be here for similar relief, steep slope relief.
Same as this application?
Yes.
Two questions, John. You described the landscaping plan, the revised submission dated 9/7, does that landscaping plan change?
That plan has not changed.
Will it, based on this new submission?
That plan included plantings on the lot we were just talking about, 45.09, which is now not proposed to be disturbed, so we don't need to replenish plants on 45.09. So that plan can certainly be revised to take 45.09 off.
Okay. And the tree count, it was back in the September 22 plan, is that the same or not? Probably not.
The September 22 plan, what was the question?
The tree count, in order to show compliance with the township ordinance for replanting, is it going to be the same? It seems like it would be less, because you're not grading offsite.
That's right, I think the replacement tree requirement would go down.
So you'll correct that number?
Yes, we can submit a revised plan.
You're planting about 500 plants, how many trees are being taken down?
I will defer to Mr. McClellan on the latest, on the latest plan, but I recall from a report along the way that there were more plants being proposed than taken down.
Last question, hearing your testimony, did you ever consider compromise between pure just grading the site, or pure just constructing retaining walls as a combination of those two techniques, to further reduce the amount of clearing?
Are you talking about a hybrid plan that had some walls and some landscaping?
Yeah.
Well...
I mean, you kind of did it up in the front of Lot 4510, so that you didn't go into the open space area.
Right, Mr. McClellan's plan does include some retaining walls on 45.10, and there's a retaining wall on 45.11 as well, adjacent to that Lot 32 that I was speaking about.
Correct.
So are you asking, can more walls be introduced to?
I mean, at the earliest hearing, I asked the question of why these driveways in the homes were so far from the end of the cul-de-sac, and I'm not going to quote you, give a reason for it, but we've been going around and around trying to figure out how to lessen the grading.
Well, the plan is...
Not getting into the import or export of material at this point, just, was it ever considered?
These are the only plans I've seen.
Okay.
Is someone going to address John's comments and John's report that we have tonight?
I think Dave's question kind of did, Dave asked about the trees, number of trees that's not on this one, right?
Well, there's two main points, one, the trees, and he knows, has to fix it, but
the amount of soil and where it comes from and that type of thing, we discussed it in passing, I guess, at the last meeting, you might want to explore that a little more.
Well, Mr. McClellan testified at the last meeting that there were approximately 34,000 cubic yards of fill, is that what you're asking?
I have 39 written down.
39.
39, that's probably an I, yes.
Okay, now, does that...
39,000?
Yeah.
Yes.
And he offered that it was coming from another development...
Just down the road.
Not within Porcypany.
Pardon?
Not within Porcypany.
I believe that's in...
2,000.
Yes, that's right, it's coming from Deff.
And the fill area is roughly where on both each lot?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chadwick, I had trouble understanding what you said.
The fill area is approximately where on each of the lots?
Where's the dirt going?
That's what Mr. McDonough was testifying to about the area of disturbance, and that's also what Mr. McClellan testified to at the last hearing. Do you want me to bring it back to point it out again on the plan?
I think it would be helpful.
All right, we'll do that after Mr. McDonough's time.
I've got a question in regards to the planting, back to Mr. O'Neill's statement, and rightly so, that this is private property. Mr. McDonough, you talked about, generally speaking, the landscape plan on it, what happens when some of these trees dies? Like, how do you maintain the ecological setting if the unanticipated occurs? Who polices that?
I think that was a question that is still open as to how that gets resolved. I know typically here in Porcypany, there's an obligation for, I believe it's two years to replant, but we can look into that.
But who polices it?
The forestry department polices that.
The difficulty, you have two classes, all non-residential is under a site plan, they have the obligation to maintain as per approved site plan. These properties don't have that, a single-family home, so to the extent there would be a method, a method to ensure replant, have a fire.
Right, but if it dies, it dies, that's basically what it is. Okay, thank you.
You testified that, sorry, I gotta find my notes here, this will not affect or alter the ridge, and I agree, I think when you look at the complete landscape, it's a sizable area in relative terms, this is a couple acres, but back in 2015, you referenced the trees a lot, you made several references to the trees and the benefits they provide. Now, there's a neighborhood on top of this hill that will be losing these trees, and I'm suspecting that their views will be significantly altered, is that accurate?
In the short term, there will certainly be change.
And define short term?
Until this reforestation establishes itself again in that 10 to 20-year range.
10 to 20 years, so it could be 20 years before the people have, and I'm trying not to be NIMBY, I'm trying not to, you know, be all about the tree, I'm just, what I, you know, the obligation I have, I'm trying to balance the impact on residents for the wishes of a developer over two houses, right? So, I just want to hear from you, the true scope of the impact on the residents who will be losing something to which they've become accustomed, right or wrong, it doesn't matter, that's what they're accustomed to, what's the impact on them?
I did not... I did not go in backyards of those homes on Long Ridge Road, so I don't know what types of landscaping is planted along the edge, and it was hard for me to tell where lines began and ended. So again, six of those lots along the common property line are going to maintain trees. Trees are going to stay. There's one lot, lot thirty-two, where the development essentially will come to the edge. And as part of our landscape plan, we can certainly put a row of evergreens to help protect. And we could go with exaggerated evergreens there, I'll say as well. Taller evergreens than the eight-foot minimum to establish a good visual screen.
And in terms of runoff on that slope, obviously the roots of the mature trees are really holding that soil in place. With those gone, what measures will be taken so that erosion is, I would say minimized, is going to be erosion? So how do you minimize that?
Well, erosion is something that's subject to the county Soil Conservation District, and we have to rely on the credibility of Mr. McClellan, that this plan has been designed in accordance with all those regulations and design requirements, and is subject to Soil Conservation approval.
Yeah. They get to look at it, too.
Okay. And one final question for me. Why wasn't this built when you guys were here in two thousand fifteen, which was, I believe, the second time? Because you had a prior approval, then you came for the wall variances. Why wasn't, why weren't these two lots addressed back in two thousand fifteen?
I don't know that answer. It seems to me it's been progressing as it goes. And all I can say on those other lots, we just didn't have a choice. We had to have those walls.
Yeah.
Because we didn't have the terrain in between to make it work.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by the board? At this point, are there any members of the public who have questions for Mr. McDonough on the testimony he's given this evening? If you do, please come forward.
Sir, for the record, can you state your name and address?
John Ihne, thirty-three Long Ridge Road.
How do you spell your last name, sir?
I-H-N-E.
Thank you.
So my question is kind of simple. You testified that there's, there are going to be homes built regardless. Are there plans currently in place to build homes on those lots? And if so, what's the difference between those plans to build and the current plans proposed today?
Well, this is the only plan being proposed right now.
So there's no plan. So if you were to build two homes and these weren't approved, you'd have to come back with new plans?
No, we just designed something in accordance with the original approval and submitted to the town.
Okay.
It wouldn't have to go to the board.
Okay. Next question. So is there no way to develop these homes closer to the street with less disturbance? A lot of the board members mentioned that there's a lot of trees being come down here and cut down for the purpose of two homes. Is there an alternative, whether it's larger retaining walls, to leave more trees in place and not have to bring in a couple thousand truckloads of dirt, cart out a couple thousand truckloads of trees and stumps on these roads, on this neighborhood, on the folks for months and months and months? Is there an alternative to develop these lots closer to the street?
This is the only plan being presented, to see.
Plan being presented. And we were informed, well, the attorney who's representing lot thirty-two, which is fifty Long Ridge, reached out to Mr. King and asked, since they could not be here, they're on their honeymoon, that the attorney also could not be here, if we could ask questions, that they would have a chance to ask questions of the planner as well as the engineer at a future time. I believe, Mr. King, you did agree to that.
Who agreed to?
Yes, I discussed it with the attorney for the applicant.
Attorney for the applicant, yes. So in that case, there will be another opportunity for them, being represented by an attorney, to ask questions of this witness.
I was told that the attorney was unavailable. These details I do not have. And I did not specifically agree to an extra hearing.
We received, I believe the attorney received an email, and that's the...
I have never been in contact with any attorney representing any property owner near this development. I've only spoken to Mr. King.
I guess Mr. King relayed the message.
Yeah, the attorney spoke to me, Mr. Hayman. He advised that he may have a associate here. He had a conflict, and I guess his clients were on their honeymoon or something. And I spoke to the applicant's attorney, and he graciously said, if that's, if that's a... If there needs to be some additional testimony, he would make the experts available. But that would just be for that attorney and not open it up for everyone else.
Agreed. Just wanted to clarify, because that attorney and that person who they represent do want to have an opportunity to ask questions.
Well, I was under the impression someone was going to come out and ask for the extension. I did not agree to an extension. I thought that someone was coming out.
The attorney...
If they needed more time, we would discuss it at the time.
The attorney sent pretty clear notification to the board about the situation, asking for a further date.
No one contacted me but Mr. King.
Again, not you, the attorney, or the fifty Long Ridge's attorney reached out directly to the board, asking for the meeting to be moved to the further date, the second of two dates that were proposed. And they said they would accommodate questions from, that is, lot thirty-two's attorney.
Well, that's up to the board.
That's up to the board.
Nora, do you have any correspondence from that attorney?
I received what Mr. King received.
Just what Mr. King said?
Mm-hmm.
There was a request to adjourn this. But in talking with Mr. O'Neill, he advised that he would, you know, if needs be, if the board felt that, you know, we could bring back the witnesses for any other questions of that, just for that attorney.
Just for that attorney. And we notified, well, as a community, we notified immediately that September twenty-seventh was picked to the neighbors, the whole community. At that moment, the attorney and that neighbor both informed the board, they will not be available to this date. And at that point, we were told, it doesn't matter, but you made the accommodation that they'd be able to ask again. I just want to make sure that that's clear, that that will occur. Because they are, as the one home, to your point, that's impacted by this clear cutting, not here, because they're on their honeymoon and their attorney could not be present. And there was two dates provided. The second date, they would have been here. We were told the first date's the one that they want to use. No further questions. Thank you.
There was, there was the one homeowner that has the attorney.
Yeah, I know one.
He contacted us, and I spoke to John. So it would just be to have the...
Mr. O'Neill, are you not willing to give an extension based on those facts? Or do you want to think of it?
I would like to talk to Mr. King, if I could have just a five-minute break.
Yeah, okay. Still a five-minute break.
That's what I'm talking about. She's still happy, though. She's into boys. Yeah, she's still fishing her ass. Just about. They'd have to. God knows how many, kind of, or they might, they might bring machines in and grind them up, and then all right away. Have you ever heard those stump grinders? They keep, they wake up the dead. At least, at least. Well, they're talking three to four months of moving dirt around, constant, all day long. We're gonna have a soft stop at nine.
Nancy, it's not like the old days, when John and I used to sit here until eleven o'clock. And one, one, one day, quarter to one, my wife, I, at that time, I had fever. Quarter to one, she's beating me, "Where the hell are you?" I had to go out and use the payphone. I didn't even have a phone.
Pay what?
Payphone, what?
I mean, it used to be meetings would get over routinely, twelve-thirty, one o'clock.
We learned to drive on a, on a, uh...
I think he's waiting to speak with Darren.
With Bel Air, whatever, Biscayne, three on the column. That's how I learned how to drive.
Yeah, that's what they had, on the column.
On the column?
That, and I haven't had that in, that's long hours.
Years. I had a little Datsun five-ten stick. My wife and I went on vacation down the road. We were living, we were living in a place that I...
I think he's waiting to speak with Darren.
And I woke up in the middle of the night, as sick as a bull. I, I, I had one hell of a buzz, and I said, "Oh, I said..." You've attempted it before, and I have, I will drive from here to the park. Once you're on the park, it's fine. You just put it in fourth gear and then you drive. Well, first told me, I'm trying to tell her how to feather the gas and clutch the gas and clutch it. She's so concerned about feathering the gas and clutching the gas and clutching. The total was a quarter. She hands the guy a dollar and keeps her not going. She got us home, she got us home, though.
I learned sticks early in college, where we had huge hills. Talk about terrifying.
But I got to come back to town.
First car I bought when I graduated, little school, was a Toyota Corolla with a stick.
With a stick?
I remember it was two thousand fifteen dollars. So I gave the guy fifteen dollars, and I got a loan for the two thousand, and I had a car for fifteen dollars. I don't know. The longer we talked, the more likely we were having a bit.
Oh, yeah. We're not going to get through these questions.
They were lined up really well, but most of those people aren't here anyway, so.
Everybody home watching the debate?
Yeah, I was a little annoyed at that. I was like, are you serious? I bet it's going to matter, but I enjoyed it.
How many of them have the debate?
Seven.
Who dropped out?
The governor of South...
I'll give you a thumbs up. Thank you.
Yeah, he did qualify. He's not North, he's not North Dakota, he's someplace else.
The North Dakota guy, I don't know if he's there. He's the one who paid him, he wants to vote for him.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, he enjoyed his fifteen minutes.
Who's the guy from, is it San Francisco? He's not a poll pitcher.
The, the, the Indian? I like him.
Is he from San Francisco?
He was doing pretty good.
I like him, and I like him. Yeah, we have, I, the members of the public have not finished asking him questions. I'm pretty sure. Can I, can I ask a question, please? And we're just kind of remembering what happened at the last meeting, and we had to end.
Okay. At the last meeting, were there still people that had questions of Mr. McClellan? Okay, we're gonna, we're going to go back to Mr. McClellan, so that anybody else having questions for him will have an opportunity to ask him, okay?
The, the, not, not encouraged.
Not encouraged?
Not encouraged.
Who, who is going to approve this, DEP or the Township Engineer?
Uh, this will be under the jurisdiction of the Town Engineer and also the Soil Conservation District.
You, you don't think we're going to be back here again in order to get the swills, get the rain gardens, whatever it is, and wind up pushing some of this grading out beyond the limits of the latest plan?
Speaking of the mic, Mark, can we try, will you please?
I'm sorry?
Speaking of the mic a bit more, I can, we can.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that we, when we finish here, we're finished. Meaning, the grading plan doesn't all of a sudden grow again.
What about a storm?
We, we have, we've looked at it enough to know that we can work within the footprint of the disturbance.
Okay. And the chairman just has the soil movement permit. Have we?
They're going to come in for that, right?
Yeah, they would.
Yeah, that would be before the council, huh?
No.
Here first.
Starts here.
And then the council would recommend.
Have you looked at that aspect of it?
I'm sorry, Mr. Kevin.
The soil movement permit will not be affected by the grading plan or not?
Uh, I don't believe so, because if, if anything, the strategies are probably going to reduce the amount of fill a little bit, but probably a negligible amount.
But do you feel confident that you can adjust within these clearing limits as shown to accommodate the new drainage or stormwater management criteria?
Yes.
Any other questions?
No.
I have a question. Go ahead.
That's the first one.
Okay, we're, we're, we're going to get to everybody, okay? We're going to get to everybody.
I just have one, uh, one question.
I had stored it.
Uh.
I stole his mic.
You stole it?
Okay. You say one of, one of the main reason for doing this is that the end user will get more side yard and backyard. How much more?
I don't have that quantify, Mr. Kevin.
Do you know, you say backyard, do you know what was the backyard size in approval? And how much more of a backyard you're going to give by doing this?
I don't have accurate numbers for that, no.
Is it significant?
My opinion is it would be significant, yes.
Thank you.
Can I ask you any questions over there?
Let Bernie go back, he wasn't there.
All right, Bernie, you're back on.
Oh, you're the best.
Davey says you went until Davey steals it.
No, Bernie's up. I just, I don't talk too fast, or fast enough. Um, I guess, I guess one of the questions I had was, originally we were talking about building large walls. And I guess the wall that's proposed on, on Lot 11, how tall is that wall going to be?
Eight feet at its highest.
And then who's going to have to maintain that? The property owner?
Property owner.
And the walls that are on, I guess the other lot, 10, how, you're saying they're there now, there are walls there now?
There are walls there, uh, on Lot 4509 to support the, the structure of the pump station. And then as the grades are going to change on 4510 to accommodate the driveway, those walls have to be extended to make that transition.
How high are those walls?
They'll be tiered walls and each, uh, tiers will be no higher than six feet.
Now, the walls that you're proposing on Lot 10 became necessary because you moved the house back, extended the driveway?
No, there, there would be walls anyway if, uh, the, when they built the pump station, it preceded the dwelling construction, so they just built as much of the wall as was needed for the pump station. But it was always contemplated that that wall would, those walls would have to extend, just didn't know where it was going to go at the time.
Anyway, I'm telling whether, what the difference in the wall is with the location of the house? Is it sa, is it going to be the same size regardless of where the house is, or?
Well, I would imagine the walls will be a little bit longer because of where the house is now. But, but the vert, but the vertical change is probably the same.
I guess, because I, how long have you, I, I'm, it's a little bit small for my eyes, but how long, how long are these driveways proposing?
The, the, uh, the dwellings are set back, I'm going to, they're a little small for my eyes, too. Uh, just bear with me a second. The, um, you know, the dwellings are set back about, uh, four hundred and fifty feet roughly, so the driveways are going to be about, you know, four hundred and twenty feet from the, uh, from the edge of the cul-de-sac to the garage, roughly.
Right, now, is that what, is that one of the variances that you're looking for?
No, the, the variance is because thi, this proposal extends beyond, back in two thousand, this, there wasn't a slope ordinance, but we did have a disturbance line that was memorialized. Now that we have a slope ordinance, uh, and, and to grade beyond that disturbance line, kicks in the requirement to check the slopes, and we know that, uh, we, uh, exceed the ordinance allowable for slope disturbance. And that's why we hear that and, and the eight-foot wall.
The pump station, that's, is, is that, can, who owns the pump station?
That'll be turned over to the township.
All right, so that's part of the whole piece of property behind it that's?
It is now, yes. So, uh, under the scheme now, it's that larger, I'm going to call it a flag lock, because it looks like a flag.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the improvement is, of course, the pump station up in the front. But that whole open space will be dedicated over as a.
But it'll remain one lot?
Yeah.
I don't know if you're going to divide off the pump station to a separate lot or?
Well, if this application gets turned down, probably consider.
I, I still like them to go for now.
Approximately how many acres?
On the pump station lot?
Yeah.
It's about eleven or twelve acres.
That is going to the town?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, that's already been dedicated, correct?
No.
These lots haven't been finalized?
The lot hasn't been turned over to the township, as far as I know.
The lots, the lots existed entitled, right?
Yes, but.
They're recorded.
That's correct.
So, Lot 4509? Only should prove the cetera, right?
The, the prior, the prior administration did not want the lot, so it was never dedicated.
Okay.
Anything else from the board? Bernie, you finished?
I'm, I'm finished.
Okay, at this point, any members of the public have any questions of Mr. McDon, Mr. McClellan? Uh, on testimony, please come forward and state your name.
Ralph Mendoza, for Pudding Stone Road. Um, I guess my question's regarding storm management on Pudding Stone Road. We actually look down towards Beverly. There's currently no storm management there now. Is there concerns, you know, in terms of making improvements along the way to reduce this, the stormwater runage?
There actually, there actually is stormwater management in place. Uh, part of the challenge is that, uh, as the development is still unpartially under construction, some of the stormwater management facilities aren't fully functional yet. Uh, but the approved plan from two thousand and three, I believe it was, uh, did include some, um, uh, some mitigation for stormwater between the, the down, the lots on the downhill side. Uh, again, and if, had we continued with the, uh, development plan from the original approval on a, on a area that size, that would be all that would be done. But now that we're making these changes, we'd be obligated to additional stormwater management, complying with today's rules.
Okay, and then my, my other part of my question is, with the amount of soil that's actually being moved, um, obviously at some point, hopefully there's some scheduled timeline in terms of how that soil will be moved and so forth. But, um, I guess my question is, do you anticipate, uh, a percentage of actually more soil being required as a result of, you know, the, the, the rain, the monsoons that we've been having, you know, more recently? So, I, I guess I'm just trying to prepare myself as a resident, you know, because we've seen damages along the road on Pudding Stone, and then they haven't been repaired. So, just trying to understand, is it, is it going to be, you know, painstaking year, years, and, you know, is, what, do you anticipate ten percent over, twenty percent over of your, what you're proposing in terms of the amount of soil being moved as a result of rain?
No, we're, we'd not anticipate that.
And how do you hold the soil if it's, you know, during construction, if the trees aren't planted?
The, their, the Soil Conservation District governs the, the site while it's under construction, specifically when those measures aren't in place. Uh, and it's done by way of silt fencing and temporary seeding where necessary. Uh, and it, and it is something that's supervised by them through the construction process. And there are occasions when you have a heavy storm and something has to be taken care of, but, uh, I can, I can tell you firsthand, because I'm one of the first people that gets the call from the Conservation District when there is a problem. Uh, and as a resident, if you see something, you also can make the phone call there and alert them, and, and trust me, they'll take action.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. Hi, Barbara Weinerman, W E I N E R M A N, 25 Longridge Road in Pudding Stone. Uh, is Mr. McDon?
Mr. McDon, Mr. McDon will be back, ma'am.
He'll be back.
Mr. McDon, Mr. McDon.
I don't know how this works. Hold it up, please. Uh, that's a little low, but.
Good.
Not really. Got to go. All right. Does it actually work? Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Sweet spot. All right, you got my name and address?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Mr. McClellan, last time when you spoke, I didn't understand anything you said, and quite frankly, I still don't understand about slope adjustments and all those things that you were talking about. So I decided I would go down Beverly Road and look at the, uh, the properties which we are discuss, discussing, and walking on them, it wasn't raining when I went, thank goodness. To me, it seems like it's a straight drop down at the end of the flat region. And so when you talk about slope adjustment, I, I could not picture this, but when I look at, you know, a flat piece of property that goes straight down, how many feet? You know, for, for those who didn't see it, how many feet of soil? I, I don't understand cubic yards and things like that, but feet I understand. Is it coming up five feet? Is it coming up ten feet? Is it coming up twenty feet to give these homeowners a usable backyard space?
And I'm assuming you're referring to the level spots off the cul-de-sac on these two lots, okay?
Which are supposedly the two buildable lots.
Yeah.
Which your attorney, in a fit of pique last week, said he could build on them tomorrow and sell them. I remember you said that, sir. So saying that they're not saleable is not a proper thing to say either, is it?
I don't remember saying it in pique, but I'll take your word for it.
Well.
Can you, can you, uh, you just said a lot of things. Can you repeat what your question is?
My question is, how big is the drop at the end of your buildable lot? Because it's, it goes straight down, and I don't understand slope adjustment or cubic yards or feet. And is it soil?
Why don't you let him answer the question?
Okay.
And I, I think I understand your concern.
Yes.
When you go stand out there today and you look at that drop?
Right.
That is not, that is not a final grading. That is not how it's going to look. That's not how it's going to be. Uh, that's just where the fill material had to stop, because that was the limit of the permit permission at the time. But, uh, there'll be more material brought in, and that platform will be set back further. And then when you get to the end of the platform, per se, then the, then the soil will be laid down on a slope so that it doesn't drop off abruptly. That would be a wall. Uh, but instead, we're going to have a slope that you could, you know, that they can vegetate, you know, would be restored to green, uh, green brown cover. And, uh, again, my, my opinion, much more aesthetic than a retaining wall. Um, but, but also, you know, gives the property the ability to restore the landscape.
Wait, so you're building platforms out and then putting soil, how many feet of soil? I, I still don't understand how many feet of soil.
You have another question, or you still?
It's the same question, which he really didn't answer. Like, if you have a drop-off like this, it goes straight down, straight down, or slightly. It's not, you know, it's a fairly, if it's a slope, it's a very steep slope.
Yeah, and again, it's just, that's just a construction.
And I understand you don't want it to be a steep slope, right? That's what you said, so you have to work around the microphone. So you want it to come out more like that.
Right.
And you said something about putting platforms on which to build the soil?
Not, not the best use of the word. You have to level the area where the construction, where the building's going to be constructed relatively level. And the question you're asking is how much?
Feet, yeah.
And, and it varies between very little, a foot or two, to areas where there might be, you know, fifteen feet raised from the existing grade. And again, that's a result of the fact that the property is a steep cross slope, and it has to be raised on one side to make it level. But then, you know, and then, once we get it where it needs to be, then it goes back on a nice gentle slope down again.
Right. So you're not just putting, al, also, is it landfill or soil?
No, it's soil.
It's actual soil. Uh, when you clearcut all those trees, are they removed, or are they left there as landfill?
They'll have to be removed.
The trees will be removed, and it's soil coming in. And I have questions for Mr. McClellan that build on this, but he's.
He'll be back. He'll be back.
So I can come back and ask him.
Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you.
Mr. McDon will be back this evening.
Yes.
Okay.
Do I have to state my name?
Yes.
Uh, Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. Uh, you're speaking of non-structural stormwater strategies, but then again, you're going to erase, virtually, uh, take away the trees and the vegetation, so, uh, has an inventory of the existing site visit, vegetation been performed?
Yes.
And you can give an actual number of the trees and the type of trees?
Yes.
Wildflowers and any other thing?
Trees.
And you, you have this, just trees?
Trees, yeah.
No other, uh, bi, biode or vegetation?
No, it's an inventory of trees that are proposed to be removed.
All right, so.
And that's probably a question for Mr. McDon, who prepared the inventory, right?
Well, this is to do with the non-structural.
No, you can ask, you can ask him.
Stormwater, because the vegetation is directly of the, uh, there's three types given on a list for non-structural stormwater strategies. One is preservation of natural areas, native ground cover, and vegetated buffers.
Mr. Homiak, may I ask you, what list are you referring to? Is that one of our exhibits?
Uh, it has the Township of Persipony on paper here somewhere, but, uh, what, uh, the, I don't understand why you're questioning, uh.
I'm just trying to identify the document, so.
It's not an internet hoax, and I didn't, uh, I didn't.
I'm just trying to identify.
I didn't print it on my local, uh, printing press. Here, here's the point I'm trying to make. I haven't heard one word about groundwater recharge on any of these lots.
I don't think this is a time for points to be made.
Are you, are you asking him about groundwater recharge?
If you have a question, you have a question. No points to be made.
Well, stormwater is related to.
Stop it.
You have to ask questions.
You got to ask a question.
Sorry, you say, this is not the time to testify, please.
All right, so can I?
You're going to ask him about groundwater recharge? Is that what you're asking?
In relation to non-structural storm, uh, water, because.
All right. All right, Mr. McDon.
Sure. Uh, and again, that goes back to the, uh, comments from earlier, that they, these two properties will be obligated to comply with NJAC seven, call it eight, not fancy talk, for the new New Jersey stormwater regulations, of which groundwater recharge is one of the criteria that has to be satisfied. We, uh, have not performed the design, because we are hoping, uh, for a board approval before we embark on that. But that is something that I'm certain the board would make condition of approval, and then would be something that would be prepared and submitted to the Engineering Department and to the Soil Conservation District for review for consistency with those rules.
Uh, are you aware that Persipony is in water deficit?
No, neither am I.
Uh, I, I want to, uh, another question. Uh, what's the lot, the, a lot, uh, for example, Lot 4509 consists of a little over eleven acres. Uh, how much of those acres will be impacted and thereby diminish the phenomena of the groundwater recharge?
Forty-five oh nine will not be impacted by this project, as we're not proposing any disturbances, any further disturbances on those eleven acres.
All right, Lot, uh, uh, forty-five ten?
Forty-five ten, the, the impact will be evaluated as part of the stormwater report that I just said would be submitted to the engineer and to the Conservation District.
Including groundwater, the loss of groundwater recharge? Is that a fact?
The strategy to replace groundwater recharge. We'll have to, uh, balance that.
Can't lose it anymore.
All right, the, the last question, I, I don't understand how the, we can allow the loss any further in a deficit, that Persipony has the highest deficit in the watershed of any more landscapes, and these landscapes in particular, they're almost all, Lot 10 and 11 is, is just about all groundwater recharge. So that recharge, I contend, will be lost.
What's the question? What's the question?
That the.
You can't testify.
The question is that the.
Because we're not paying attention to you when you testify. You've got to ask questions now. If I may, Mr. Homiak. Don't start citing reports that we have no idea where they came from. If you have a question, groundwater recharge, what's the groundwater recharge? Very simple.
All right, and.
Ask your questions, please.
Not for anything, the reason I asked it, the, uh, is the EcoScience Report, October 11th, 2019, still the only standing environmental impact study that was done, uh, for these three lots?
That's a, gonna, that's from a prior application, and it's not valid at all.
Is there a valid one now?
That's what Mr. McClellan's testifying, it's going to need to be done with the Town Engineer and with the Soil Conservation.
And there is, uh, no groundwater recharge, uh, mentioned in this report? Is there any mention in the new report?
I think that's Mr. McClellan was telling you, there are now new standards for groundwater recharge, trying to capture that, where that wasn't the case before, under the old standards, so it has to be designed to the new standards, which is why that's no good.
And the board has this?
I don't think anybody has that but you tonight.
The new one?
There's no new one yet, because it has to be approved and designed.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Philip Passesek. I live at 49 Longridge Road, directly above the sites that are proposed. Has an environmental impact statement, uh, been done to address the contamination of the reservoir on Greystone property?
Can't answer that question, we're not aware of that issue.
Don't you think it should be addressed?
I don't know what you're talking about.
We've been running off this property for the last nineteen years. The silt fences have been down half the time, uh, during the construction. You didn't sil, you didn't put, uh, seed and hay on the property for periods of time when your construction stopped.
Can you just talk into the mic?
Really? Yeah, you got to.
More than, uh, three months, uh, time, uh, there. Directly below this site is a recharge basin for the aquifer.
We're not hearing you.
Bring, bring the mic closer to your mouth, please, just, yeah.
Raise it up.
Turn it in the middle and raise it up.
A friend from the AV club, like, maybe has to help out with this.
Directly below this site is a recharge basin for the aquifer. Sediment from this property has been contaminating the aquifer, which affects not just the water quality in Persipony, but for the entire county. What are you going to do about that? Are you going to do an environmental impact statement that addresses those issues? Because up until now.
I have no idea what you're talking about. I don't know what you're talking, I honestly don't know what you're talking about. Has there been some complaint or something?
Are you going to do an environmental impact statement regarding the contamination of the aquifer?
No.
Why not?
Because we don't, not aware of any contamination of the aquifer. We don't know what you're talking about.
Well, if you didn't do an environmental impact statement, how are you going to be able to know if you did or not?
We're not aware of any problems, sir, I'm sorry.
Are you aware that sediment from this property has been flowing down Black Brook into, um, um, Whippenny River, going into, um, Spewell Lake and Lake Pocahontas in Morristown, silting that up for the last nineteen years? It'll probably cost the town a million dollars to dredge those lakes because of your negligence? Are you aware of that?
First, we're here and about it.
Really? You never look downstream from what you're doing? Water flows downstream. How many millions of gallons of water flow across those two lots each year?
Sir, we're not going to be able to deduce this this evening. We're not aware of any complaints.
I asked you how many millions of gallons of water flow across this property every year?
Don't have that number.
I would like you to get that number for me.
We're not going to get that number.
Why not?
Because we're not. It doesn't, it's not applicable to what's being calculated.
There's been a re-grading and, um, uh, drainage on Longridge Road and High Ridge Road, and the water goes into spillways. So now the water coming off of the mountain is much more on these sites than in the past. You should be addressing that, because if you build anything there, you got millions of gallons of water coming down and washing the thing down a hill, you already had a foundation under your property split in half, and then you dug half of it out and redid it, but you never went down below grade to see if the crack went further.
Excuse, excuse me, excuse me. I'm worried about you having a heart attack right now.
I'm not going to have a heart attack.
So take yourself down a notch.
I'm not going to have a heart attack.
This is, this is, this is a public meeting, okay? Take it down a notch. You were asking questions, the witness hasn't had the answers.
Well, will you get me the answers?
If I may.
When I ask questions, will you get me the answers for the next meeting?
No. As Mr. McClellan testified, if this is approved by the board, we will then go to the Township Engineer and Soil Conservation and do calculations for stormwater issues. If you've got any issue with any of this stuff going on that you're talking about, please make the Township Engineer aware of it, so we can address it at that stage. That's all I can tell you.
You're proposing to do four hundred and fifty-foot-long driveways. If a fire truck comes down a hill, you think it's going to roll over five times, getting to the fire?
Excuse me, sir. I'm going to cut you off if you don't ask questions, okay?
I asked him a question.
Ask a question. Now, you're talking about fire engines, okay? That's not part of this application.
It's a steep slope, it's a steep slope.
Do you have any more questions to ask?
Did you ever consider an alternative site such as the power line between Glenmont phases there to put the soil in there, build some sports fields for them, because you never had any open space? You won't destroy the whole hillside, uh, above, uh, Pudding Stone Development?
I have to tell you, sir, given the room acoustics, I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
I'll say, I'll say it again.
But I did hear you say, have you considered any alternative sites?
Yes.
That's a no.
Well, I'm.
This is the approved lots, so we're only here for these two lots.
You're looking to do changes to the lots?
That's right.
And I'm saying, here's an alternative change.
But that, is that approved?
Put the soil there, put it somewhere else.
Under power lines for a house?
This is all about saving two million dollars to bring soil from another town and dump it in our neighborhood.
Sir, sir, you're done.
Thank you.
You're done.
Hi there, I'm Lucinda Crane, C R A I N. I live at 6 Longridge Road. I've lived there for twenty-four years. I have exhibits. I don't know if I can show them.
That's for later. This is for questions.
Okay, great.
Okay. You'll have an opportunity in the public session to, to.
Testify.
Testify. I can't guarantee that any, any documents you bring with you, if you're not, if you're not an expert witness or there's some connection, we just don't accept, accept stuff unless it is prevented by, presented by a professional. Is that correct?
Not in, not someone that lives in the neighborhood and sees what's happening day-to-day with the construction site. You can't bring a picture or?
If you took, if you took a picture and you can testify and lay a foundation, you could present it.
And that's later?
Yes.
Okay.
So after all the questions are done, after the applicant rests his case, then the chairman's going to open it up to the public for testimony for or against the project. At that point in time, everyone can come back up and testify why they think the project is good, or why they think it's bad.
In the statement section.
And, yes.
And when you, you'll be sworn under oath. But let me just say, if you bring pictures of, of, um, the site or.
of, of the site or certain conditions, that's fine, but if you bring formal reports that have been prepared by someone else, we can't, we can't take them.
These are, these are pictures of what's happening with the erosion.
And you took them, correct?
Yes, I did.
That's fine, yes.
And I can make them, I can, uh, present them in the statement section.
That's correct.
Okay.
And it would be, it would be advisable that you make about fifteen or twenty copies of them.
Not one big poster?
Well, if you give us, if you give us something to look at right in front of us, it's gonna be a little more meaningful, okay?
Got you. Okay. First question, have you applied for an NJDEP permit to build within a wetlands transition threshold as per the Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act?
For these two properties, no.
And why is that?
We have no knowledge of wetlands or wetland transitions on these two properties.
Okay. Could you please comment on your soil and erosion plan, how it specifically prevents sediment from the construction site from reaching the adjacent Greystone property below?
The, currently, the, these two lots will have to, are going to be recertified as a result of this application should the board approve it, but I think you're asking regarding, under the previous certification, there is a, there's silt fencing and what the, what the conservation district refers to as super silt fencing, uh, that runs along the toe of the slope behind lots, the lots that are adjacent to Greystone property.
Are you knowledgeable about the amount of soil that was dumped on the construction site in fall and winter of last year? Where did it come from? How much? And was it tested?
I'm knowledgeable that the soil is there, I don't have knowledge of where it came from.
And the amount?
The, uh, I, I can tell you that it was placed within the limits of disturbance from the original approval. About an acre of area or something like that.
A half acre of soil? There was a, there was a lot of soil that was dumped on the building site over the last few years, constantly, starting at seven AM in the morning. How much soil was there dumped fall and winter of last year?
I haven't performed those calculations.
And was that, was that soil approved to be dumped there for the construction site? For the new construction site? For the variance?
Well, that's covered under the prior approval. So what we're doing here tonight is we're modifying that approval. So it's been, what you saw happen was to the limits of the prior approvals.
And you don't have any idea of where that soil came from and if it was tested?
Not tonight.
No, you don't. It could be contaminated and we don't know that.
It could also be uncontaminated.
But we don't know that.
Uncontaminated?
Are you aware that the silt fence repaired in May-June has not held?
I'm, I'm aware that the silt fence has been repaired several times along that line, and it's, it's constantly being monitored, uh, both by our firm, also by the conservation district, and when we have heavy rains like we've seen, there are times to go out and have to repair that fence again, so we are aware of that.
And the NJDEP is aware?
Soil Conservation District.
Soil Conservation District.
Are you aware that the sediment from the neglected building site has formed two long rivers along the adjacent Greystone property since March timeframe until now? One river causing a wetland area to be filled with sediment and another area of NJDEP capped landfill called Blueberry Hill that was not to be touched in thirty years. It was gullied. The other river has reached the large reservoir on the main campus.
Is there a question here?
Yes.
What's the question?
Are you aware?
I, we've been contacted by the neighbor, we've been on site with them to observe it, there are, there, there's rutting, but there's, it's not a river, but there is rutting and it's being addressed.
The gullied river and the second river off the current construction site has moved at least a mile. It has destroyed a wetland area. It is down on the main campus, the sediment has run into the main campus reservoir which is at least a mile away.
Ma'am, can I ask you, have you made the Morris County Soil Conservation District aware of any of that?
Yes, we have.
Have you heard anything?
I don't know about the measurement stuff. I can't testify that it's a mile downstream, but again, we have responded to, uh, the calls from the neighbor, we've been on site with them, we've inspected the areas, and we're in the process of working that out with them.
Did you receive a notice of violation from the commissioner's office of the NJDEP last week stating the following? As a result of an investigation on September thirteenth, notices of violation were issued to Putting Stone Developers LLC for unauthorized disturbance of freshwater wetlands and transition area at thirty-five through forty-seven Beverly Street, block seven, lots forty-five oh nine, forty-five oh eight, forty-five oh nine, and fifty-nine Koch Avenue, block seven, lot one, and block ten, lot one, point oh one, in Precipiny Troy Hills.
Your contacts are a little better than ours, ma'am, we were just made aware of that actually today, and, uh, we are responding to that, but that is not these lots, these are different lots.
This is in the same area.
These are, we're just dealing with these lots now.
These lots are connected to those lots.
We're just, all that's before the board is these three lots.
Are you aware that there are tributaries of the North Branch Whippany River on the Greystone property just below the building lots in question, an exit off of the front of the sediment-filled reservoir on the front of the campus?
Ma'am, we're just dealing with these three lots.
You're not dealing with the adjacent property of Greystone?
Right.
You don't care about the wetlands in that area?
Ma'am, we're just dealing with these three lots.
Should the variance be approved, how will you control the sediment from this project's two thousand-plus truckloads of dirt planned to degrade the mountainside?
You're a little high on your number for truckloads, but I'll let Mr. McClellan address the question.
Again, the, that activity, as is on the current construction, is overseen by the conservation district in Morris County. There are rules and regulations about how to protect the, uh, we know from the experiences on Putting Stone so far that, and we've already been advised by the district, that we'll have enhanced, uh, soil protection barriers at the toe of the slope. There's also, um, you know, to be, you know, diversion berms and, and, uh, protection of the inlet structures, uh, there's, again, temporary seeding, there's, there's careful stockpiling of, of topsoil that has to be protected and fenced. These are all within their regulations and these are all part of the responsibility of, of the applicant, uh, and that, that plan must be certified before construction and then must be implemented, and again, is overseen by, by that department.
If the sediment reaches the North Branch Whippany River on the Greystone property, sediment will flow downstream into the Speedwell and Pocahontas Lakes in Morristown Township. Who will be responsible for more damage to the Greystone property? Who will be responsible for dredging the Pocahontas Lake and the Speedwell Lake? The sediment is already in the North Branch Whippany River.
Ma'am, we're just dealing with the three lots that are here before the board this evening.
So you don't care about the properties below? You're just caring about the current properties that you're building?
We're just talking about these three lots. Just these three lots.
So the builder has no concern about the adjacent properties?
Ma'am, we're just talking, at this, with this board, their jurisdiction extends over these three lots only.
We have no jurisdiction over the rest of what you're talking about. We're only here to discuss two lots.
They're neighbors. You don't care about the neighbors?
I care about everything. I care about every quadrant of this town.
You don't care about wetlands on a state property?
Let me finish, let me finish. I care about ev, and don't ever say I don't care, okay? Because I do care. I wouldn't be sitting here for thirty-four years if I didn't care. Okay? So, we're talking about two lots, that's all we have in our, under our jurisdiction right now. You could tell us about all the floods, all the silt, we have no, we have no jurisdiction over it.
We're looking at...
Two lots, two lots.
We're looking at six hundred thousand dollars' worth of damage so far to the Greystone property or more.
We don't know what you're talking about.
You don't have any more questions, please sit down. You have another question? I'll be more than happy to ask a question.
In your experience, how do you clean a landfill that was not to be touched in thirty years?
Don't answer that question, that's, that's ridiculous. We're talking about these three lots, there are no landfills on these lots. We don't know what you're talking about because it's not part of this application. We're talking about this application tonight. If you've got legitimate issues about these things, bring them up to the relevant authorities and I'm sure it'll get worked out some way.
Thank you for the applause.
Good evening, my name is Elliot Ruga, I'm the Policy and Communications Director at the New Jersey Highlands Coalition. Um, regarding the waters, uh, the water features the previous member of the public spoke about, that you're not aware of, which may be in the vicinity, but not on the subject lots, um, are you sure?
You know, Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna object to any more questions that have anything to do with anything beyond this application. You can applaud all you want, but this is about these three lots of which only two are being developed.
You haven't heard my question, sir.
Please, please ask your question, please ask your question.
Are you sure that you are outside of the regulated riparian zones of some waters that may be in the vicinity of your property, of these lots?
Yes.
Even though you testified you may not be, you may not be aware of it?
Oh, come on, he said yes, that's it.
Okay. Um, you testified that you do not know at this time, uh, the volume of stormwater that will flow across these lots.
Correct.
But, but, uh, in order to, um, get approved with, uh, the state and Soil Conservation District and, uh, local stormwater regulations, you will need to know the pre and post stormwater volume.
Yes.
Could it be, uh, is it possible that what you learned because of the criticality of these slopes, that you may have to come back before this board with a modified application?
Mr. McClellan has already testified it is remotely possible. He is confident that this approval this evening can be designed within the limits of this approval, along with the township and Soil Conservation District. That is his testimony.
But it's possible? Yes.
Yes, anything is possible.
Thank you.
John Ein, thirty-three Longridge, just one question for Mr. McClellan. Um, you, you noted that if the homes were to be built in the originally approved building envelope, there'd be high walls and less yard. When I'm looking at the current lots for forty-five eleven and forty-five ten, the, the small lines that are next to each other shows grading, correct? I just wanna understand what type of yard and what, really what type of improvement to the yard for those homeowners are really taking place? It looks like, from the picture, from the plans, that it's a flat little yard that's, then falls off pretty abruptly. Is, is that true or how grade, like, what's the difference in size of the yard that would be applied?
Mr. McClellan testified that he hadn't done the calculations for the previous approval.
Hadn't done. But how, I guess, I guess then how do you, how do you testify that it's better than?
He said, because he said it was a significant difference. You don't have to do the ultimate calculation to see the difference.
Okay, so I guess the question for the planner would be, how do you weigh the two options? He would have, would he have to, because we're saying that this is a better use of the land type for the variance you're applying for, which I understand, but if it's really about the home and the building envelope and the yard, wouldn't that have to be taken into consideration for the board to take a proper vote?
He's talking about the relativity of it.
Relativity?
Yeah. This is smaller than this, I don't have the calculation for this, I don't have the calculation.
And that makes pretty sense, but we're cutting four hundred trees down for relative numbers. It seems like that's something that should be known to take a proper vote.
We're planning more than we're taking down, and in the case of the original approval, there is no replanning of trees.
The, the original developers who developed Putting Stone Heights above left as many trees as possible. Um, this is not that, but that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
I spoke before, Chris Bayles, thirty-eight Longridge.
I'm sorry, your name?
Chris Bayles, thirty-eight Longridge.
Bayles, B-A-Y.
B-A-Y-L-E-S.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. McClellan, you strike me as a very knowledgeable engineer, so, uh, I'm sure in your planning, you, um, you assess some of the risks. I was wondering if you could share with the public, as you contemplated your solution, could you tell us what the largest few, maybe three or four risks were that you thought about mitigating with your plan? What were those risks?
From what, from what perspective?
Uh, can we go with, uh, can we go with an erosion perspective?
From an erosion perspective?
Sure.
The, again, we're having some experience with the erosion out there, we know that we have, uh, steeper slopes, so the enhanced soil erosion fencing is, uh, the ultimate tool to put at the bottom of the slope, that will be part of the soil erosion application. Uh, again, as far as the onsite, uh, planning is concerned, the vegetation that's proposed, and just to correct the, um, the, the neighbor before, the tree removal count is, is three hundred trees, not four hundred, but, uh, the replacement of those trees, uh, and, and the ground covering and the shrubs and flowers will provide a permanent, uh, erosion control during the construction process, it's, it, there's a diligent, uh, activity, diligent requirement to, uh, you know, keep those silt fences in place. Uh, in this case, we'll have them in multiple locations, we just won't rely on them at the bottom of the hill. I, I would see us having them on the downhill side of each of the driveways as well, so that we have a number of opportunities to catch sediment as it's coming down, and then again, with the cooperation of the district, if there is an issue, uh, you know, one, we'll fix what we see, and two, if we're notified, uh, the applicant has had a, a, a history of responding to, uh, issues from the, that the conservation district may have raised, so...
Uh, I, I didn't really want you to go that far into the whole silt thing, I think we already had that conversation. I guess I was thinking more on a permanent basis.
Well, the permanent basis is the, the soil, the stormwater management plan is gonna have, play a significant role in mitigating runoff because it's gonna provide opportunities for, uh, reduction of the flow that runs off, it's gonna provide opportunities for water to recharge into the ground, it's gonna provide opportunities for water to be, uh, for water quality to be enhanced. The, uh, vegetation proposed on the mitigation plan by Mr. McDonough, uh, will not only provide the stabilization of the surface, but also will provide some of the transpiration and, and other methods that water can be mitigated, uh, through vegetation. So it's a, it's a, and, and these are consistent with what the DEP is looking to accomplish with these new rules.
Okay. I guess, uh, let me try to direct you more to where my question is aimed, and it's more about the substantialness of what's being done, okay? Uh, in my imagination, you know, and I want, my question is, do you agree with me? I see excavation and what we choose to move the earth around as a, as a big influencer on the final outcome, the stability of the land. You, you've also talked about the reforestation or revegetation plan as another, and then, thirdly, stormwater management. I guess, where I'm asking you is, could you give us a risk assessment about the riskiness of the project, the likelihood of things surviving a ten, twenty, fifty, hundred-year storm for, with everything that you're doing? Could you give us the community some assurances about the... Could you give us the community some assurances about the sustainability of what you're designing? Will it stand the test of time? And tell us why?
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure what you're asking me to provide a risk assessment for, but the information that we use to design stormwater is based on statistical analysis. And I can share with you that the DEP not only requires us to supplement the actual rainfall data that we have today, but we also have to make projections based on climate changes that are anticipated between now and the year 2100. And I can tell you from the brief experience we've had with those regulations that those, the impact of those regulations is significant. And they go well beyond the, what we used to call the one-hundred-year storm, or we still call it that. But they've added factors that actually probably put the storm, design storm into the category of a one-in-five-hundred-year or even greater storm. Now again, it doesn't mean it's once in five-hundred years, but it's something that has the likelihood of happening maybe twice in a thousand years or something like that. So it's statistical analysis. I can offer you that, but I can't offer you an actual risk assessment on a site-by-site basis.
I am looking for some sort of characterization because lots forty-five, the top two lots, I think it's eleven and ten. You know, the percentage of steep slope that they occupy is sky-high. It's like one's eighty-eight percent, the other's ninety-two percent steep. And the definition of steep, I think, is greater than twenty percent. And when I lived there, you know, the steep is, it's well north of the twenty percent. So I'm trying to think about the erosion back to that subject.
Where are we going with this? Is this a question?
I want to know, I want to know if, how dangerous this is from an erosion perspective. We're yanking out trees that have a width of this or more.
By your state, all kinds of statistics or whatever, it's not part of asking him a question. Do you have a question?
I'm trying to help him.
Is there going to be X? Is there going to be Y? Based on what you know, is this going to happen?
Well, I still haven't gotten my answer, Mr. McCain. I've asked him for a characterization of the risk on the project and how well his plan is mitigating it. And I'm just trying to help him, work with him in conversation to get the answer.
I think I understand what the problem here is. See, we have, we are required as an applicant, he is required as an engineer, to design it to New Jersey state standards. So those are the standards we have to address. Whatever the state enumerates, if there are other issues, maybe legitimate, maybe not, I'm not saying they're not, but these things are beyond the regulations, and he is not required to design beyond the regulations. Now, the new stormwater standards, as he just told you, have pushed that out very aggressively. Jersey's trying to get ahead of it because we've had significant problems all over the state. So we're designing to those standards. That's, that's all we're doing. Risk assessment, that's being done by people who are establishing those standards. So we can't speak to that.
Okay. Then I guess my last question is, what are the chances that the plan, we've heard, we've heard from, I'm sorry, the arborist or, I'm sorry, I don't want to insult you, but the reforestation plan guy, that it's going to take ten to twenty years for it to sort of mature? I mean, if we are, if we are designing a solution that's going to, not going to withstand a twenty-year storm, or a fifty, or a hundred-year storm in the interim, what will be the result? And what will be the burden on the homeowners that live there and also the town?
That's a fair question. And the answer is that, not to confuse the time it takes for the reforestation plan to mature versus having appropriate soil erosion measures, permanent soil erosion measures in place. Before Morris County Soil Conservation District will sign off on the project and release the applicant from, from the requirements of the permit, the site has to be permanently stabilized. And what that mean, what that will mean is that there'll need to be a ground cover, whether it be a lawn-type material or an erosion-control matting, or, you know, horizontal junipers, or some other, you know, low-lying landscaping will have to be installed and will have to be mature enough for the district to say, okay, there's no risk of erosion now. That combined with the stormwater design, that will be sufficient. The landscape plan, the maturing of the landscape plan really is, is an extra component that my calculations won't even take into account. So it's really, it's a protection kind of above and beyond what, what the state is going to be asking for, what the state is asking for.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Good evening. Tom Williams, 41 Longridge Road. Parsippany has existing critical slope and other regulations to follow. So the actuality, we can follow them now and not have any of these issues because we want to make a variance on the personalizing slope issues. The real question is, I also, I think the variance is asked for hardships, I believe. I haven't seen what the hardship yet is because they can build on this property. And by the way, I suggest building a smaller home. Don't build a big one, and then you can have more room for the yard if you want to put it in there.
Is that a question for Mr. McDonough? Who will be back?
The question is, why are these variances really being requested? Is it for hardship?
Yes. It's for the reasons we've presented. Why do you think they're being presented?
What are those reasons? More, I mean, you didn't give the reason.
It was Mr. McDonough's testimony, and John, no, because we're not done with Pat yet. So we have to finish with Mr. McClellan, then we'll get back to Mr. McDonough.
So we do have existing rules and regulations by Parsippany that will cover this situation now. We're asking for a variance from our own regulations that you wisely put in effect to protect us overall. So thank you for that. We've just got to follow those rules and regulations to make it happen for Parsippany. We've already cut down a lot of trees in that community. How many acres do we have in that new community?
The entire community?
Yeah, the whole community.
It's beyond the scope of this application. We're way of field now.
It's all part of your community. Well, you, okay, you got, you got the...
We're not going to give you the answer to that tonight because we don't have it.
So we no longer have a canopy in that section of, when you come up pan over, you no longer see a canopy, right, of trees? You see houses, correct? Oh, you don't want to answer that?
You can save that for when he comes back up.
Okay, okay. He doesn't want to answer that anyway. It's a tough one.
Well, you can save it for when he comes back up here.
Okay.
This didn't happen yesterday. His photo exhibit shows you the development of the property. It's been over ten years.
But you had the property for thirty years, so you know you got, you had those two lots you could have mapped out years ago and made it work. Every nation would have been mapped out thirty years ago and it would have been done, correct? Now, how do you balance all this turmoil by changing regulations for two homes? You're impacting a hundred and fifty homes, maybe? You're impacting...
I think you need to wait till it's time to...
How do you balance the cut-down, four hundred trees, or changing the terrain and topography for two homes?
That is a question for Mr. McDonough, who will be back next.
I look forward to that, ma'am. Thank you for telling me which way to go. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, Kathy Sheridan, 12 Puttingstone.
Can you say her last name?
Sheridan, S-H-E-R-I-D-A-N. With the last time you brought in dirt, there was approximately fifty trucks in, fifty trucks out every day for approximately eight weeks. What is the timeframe that you're talking about bringing dirt in on this project? And when, if you get approved, is it going to start? How long is it going to take? And will there be any restrictions on when the trucks can run? Because instead of running at seven in the morning, you know, to six in the afternoon, seven days a week, or will it be five days a week? Will there be restrictions on the time?
The, my understanding is their municipality has an ordinance limiting the hours of operation for soil movement activity. Those will be followed. I'm sorry, what was the other part of the question?
When, last time you brought in the soil, it was about, we, because we, on our ring doorbell, we saw it was fifty trucks in and fifty trucks out. Every day ran about a truck past our house every seven minutes for over, it was over eight weeks. So we lived with that five days a week for an entire summer. So what I'm asking is, how long is this going to take? How many truckloads in and out? And when will this start? If you get the approval, when will this begin and when will it end?
The latter question, again, if the board acts favorably, we still have more work to do. We have to prepare the stormwater report, get the approval. We would have a couple of months before we would secure approval from the engineer and from the Conservation District as a result of those criteria. So that'll push soil activity beyond the next couple of months. As far as the length of time, I can only speculate because I don't do the construction management, but the building, the earthwork movement would be early in the project, probably would last maybe two to three months, maybe.
Okay. So supposedly you already have a new development picked out of where you're bringing the dirt in from, correct?
There's, yes.
Okay. So if you don't get this approved, do you have an alternate place to put that dirt? Or is this development specifically...
No, wait, stop, stop. We are not answering questions that have anything to do with projects beyond this application. We testified where the soil's coming from. If, if it takes longer for whatever reason and another source has to be developed, that would be worked out with the town. But right now, the best estimate is where it's coming from is in Denville, at that project. What's going to happen in the future, we cannot predict. We're not talking about the Denville project. We're talking about this project.
So do you, who would I ask a question to as to how much this is adding cost-wise per building site? I mean, does it make, I'm just asking, is this, if, what the financial sense is to put this much money moving dirt on a property that is, and how much are they going to increase the purchase price of this house? Or was it, or is this only done just for the fact?
Economics are beyond, he's not answering questions.
We don't deal in selling prices of these houses, okay? Or a cost of these houses. We deal with the zoning requirements that we're supposed to rule on, okay? And what they're requesting is a C-variance.
C-variants is a long-term requirement.
So is, my question really is, is the only reason you want to extend these lots is because you have to bring dirt in from somewhere else?
No, that's ridiculous.
No, I don't think that's ridiculous. That's not a ridiculous question.
It is ridiculous.
No, it's not. And don't patronize me. Thank you.
Are you done? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I got, you know, we've, we have been sitting here listening to questions far afield for what may be legitimate issues, but they don't affect this application. And tonight has, the whole purpose of tonight has been basically to filibuster this application. So now you're going to get ready to ask me for an extension to a new hearing date. But I would like, I would like to get done with this public tonight so we can narrow these issues down. Because a number of people have come up multiple times through this application asking these questions that have nothing to do with what we're doing. So I realize the hour is getting late, but can we try to at least poll how many other people have questions? So maybe we can get through this?
I thought we were done. You have a question?
I have a question.
Please ask it. Identify yourself.
My name is Jess Becker, and I live at 12 High Ridge Road in Puttingstone.
Please speak up. Close your mic.
I'm Jess Becker, and I live at 12 High Ridge Road in Puttingstone. And I've been making myself familiar with this, it calls science study.
It's not before the board to see.
It says lots forty-five, ten, and eleven on the study.
It's outdated.
And that's what we are talking about. So will there be another study done then that is not outdated that we can reference?
Calculations will be provided to the township engineer and the Soil Conservation District if this board sees fit to approve it. This is the zoning board.
I get, I understand. So I have questions about this study to the engineer.
We're not prepared to talk about it because it's outdated.
So will there be another study done and will we have the opportunity to ask questions?
Not before this board.
Why? I would like to, so will, if you do another study, will the public have the opportunity to ask questions on that study when it comes out? This does pertain to the engineering questions. You're going to be bringing soil in. It's going to go downstream, and that is going to affect lot forty-five oh nine, which you talked about deeding to the town.
I understand you're getting upset, but we're following the procedures established by the township of Parsippany.
Well, I'm getting upset because you're saying that we're not going to have the opportunity to ask questions or see the new study. You would like us to leave and go home so that you can get your approval, but you don't want us to ask the questions that we have. And we've been putting months of time into familiarizing ourselves with these studies and formulating our questions on them, and I feel like we just have the right to ask them of you. So if this is outdated and no longer good, I would like to know when you intend to have another one done.
Ma'am, if I may.
Can I come back and ask questions?
If I may. I think the engineer testified probably two or three times that that study was in regard to older regulations. There's new regulations that have come about that are more significant and more difficult.
Thank you.
That's going to be done between the towns engineer and the applicant if this is approved. Is that, is that...
That's correct.
I guess my question then is, why wouldn't you want to see the new study before making your approvals? Because this may be relevant to something that you might want to ask yourself before making the approval.
So once, once, if approval is granted, subject to the approval is them having to talk to the towns engineer to come up with how the drainage is going to be, where the water is going to go, et cetera, based upon the state's new more stringent requirements. We don't have, this board doesn't have anything to do with that.
We have no authority on this.
What happens is if, again, if approval is granted, then it goes back and it is subject to them following the requirements from the state and the approval of the towns engineer.
Mr. King, I think the app, the audience too, approval can be given with contingencies that these future studies have to come to us for review and a final approval. Is that correct or not?
No, not this, not this one.
That's what I'm getting. No, the regulatory bodies have taken that away from the board. It's now resting with the engineers, so...
The town engineers.
Right. So you could approve it, and if we can't design it to the standards, then we can't do it.
So how could you approve something then if you don't, if you don't know?
Because it's contingent upon the state and the town engineer saying that this, this can be done under these very difficult requirements that the state requires them to do. And those are memorialized in a resolution. It's a document. So if we say you can't do this unless you do A, B, and C, and they can only do A and B but not C, it's over.
This is just a step in the process. Yeah, that's a point.
So I, so if you were to approve this application tonight, and they come in with a new environmental study, and they can't, and something is wrong, you're not going to let them build or continue to build? Is that what you're saying?
The town's not going to let them build.
The town, right.
We're just going to look at the variances. Anything beyond our little setup here is the town, the administration, the township engineer, et cetera, et cetera, the building department that will approve the building plans and everything.
The people who get a salary for having these conversations.
I mean, no disrespect, but doesn't it seem sort of backwards to give approval before you...
I don't want to discuss that.
Before you know...
I don't want to discuss that.
Okay.
That is not part of our application.
I understand a lot.
I sympathize with you, and you know what? You can always call the township engineer and say, where does, where does this application stand? And you can get firsthand information from the town engineer. We are not in the administration, the workings of Town Hall. We are just a quasi-judicial board that grants or rejects variances.
I understand, but I would, I would think that you would want...
Please, please, please!
I would think that you would want to weigh everything before making a decision.
It's discussed already. It's done. There's nothing we can do.
Thank you for your time.
Any other members of the public have any questions of Mr. McClellan? Show of hands, how many people have questions of Mr. McDonough? Oh, we're not going to finish this tonight.
Are we done with Mr. McClellan?
Yes. But what about the, whatever that discussion was about the attorney?
We'll talk about that.
So the attorney at the prior meeting was the first one to question the engineer. So he's done. So what's left would be questions for your planner, and that goes into perfectly for him because he can review what happened here tonight. My suggestion is you may want to call him. My suggestion is you may want to call him, and maybe some of those questions could be answered prior to it, but if he has any questions on, on the next meeting with the public, he can ask those questions.
Nora, what is it, October 21st?
At the Town Hall?
October 25th.
25th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do I have a motion to carry this case to October 25th without further notice?
Stormwater.
Are the extensions are required?
Stormwater.
Second story.
You'll give the extensions, John.
Any discussion?
All extensions through the end of the month, October.
End of October?
October 30th, yeah.
Any discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And it'll be at Town Hall, Mr. Chairman?
Well, if we're only going to have 20 people...
Well, it's about 50.
No, they are going to have more. They are going to bring more people. Delayed.
So, so ma'am, as we discuss, once the questions are asked of the planner, and there's no more questions, then it goes over, they're going to close their application, and then you, the public, will be able to present testimony for or against.
Thank you, sir. Motion to adjourn.
Stormwater.
In favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, guys.